I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We had a close session last week that was canceled, so we didn't have a close session last week on government code 54956.9, labor negotiations with our three labor unions, SEIU, DSA, CCPS, EAA. Thank you. I'd like to move to the consent agenda. Is there any item on consent that the board staff or public would like to pull from consent? May I entertain a motion?
So may I, Madam Chair?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a five vote, we're in recess till 9:10.
See Gary, how I did it? I said me.
Item five, public comments. If anyone has an item they'd like to address not on the agenda, please come forward. There's five minutes per person.
Good morning, Mary Mutt, Agricultural Commissioner. Today I'm going to release the 2009 Report of Agriculture, so before I do that, I would like to present each of you with a copy of the report. I have copies for the press as well if they would like, if they're here to take a copy. And it will also be posted on the department's website at the county webpage, so it will be available there. It wasn't a big, there wasn't much of a change from last year. Actually, the agricultural production decreased 0.5 percent from 2009, and this is attributable to timber. Timber decreased in value $2 million, but yet it was offset by grapes because grapes increased $2 million. And the reason for this increase in grapes, if you recall, back in 2008, April, there was a dreadful freeze, there was quite a freeze out there, and it just wiped out the grapes. And so that's why they were so low in 2008, and this year they have recovered. So overall, our production for 2009 is over $20 million. That's just slightly below the 2008 production level. Cattle and calves continue to be the leading farm commodity. They decreased slightly this year, but they still are the leading commodity. Following cattle and calves are the wine grape, is the wine grape industry with a value of over $3 million. And then poultry follows third. Our poultry industry is our third leading agricultural commodity. So I will put this, I will ask tech services to post this on the county website, and it will be available to any that need it. And I thank you for the opportunity to present this to you.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi, I'm Penny West, and I live in Glencoe, which is kind of like a suburb of Railroad Flat. And I'm here to tell you how proud I am that we had a fundraising Tiger Fest, that's the mascot of Railroad Flat School, over the weekend on Saturday, and we netted $12,000, thank you very much, to overwhelming support from the community and beyond. That's one of the advantages of having a 100-year-old, over 100-year-old school, is that there's a whole lot of people out there who want to support you and save the school, and that's what we were all about. We were threatened with closure by the CUSD school board. They voted to keep it open for one more year, but we just aren't sure what's going to happen after that, and so this is our effort to show the rest of the world that we are worthy of saving and that the people down below don't have to worry that we're going to be taking funds away from their schools. So I want to thank those of you who were there to help us, meaning Steve Wolinski was there as the king of the dunk tank. Here he is in today's enterprise, and I forgot that I have something to give back to him, his towels and a couple of the balls left over from the tank.
I guess we were a little rowdy. I left in some disarray.
So that's it in a nutshell. We are, you know, we are the mighty school that could and can, and we will continue to do that. Also, I do have another hat, as you all know. I'm the deputy director of the Calaveras County Arts Council, so I might as well tell you that Music in the Parks is going to be starting again for its 19th season, and that's a week from tomorrow. We'll be down at Coppertown in Copperopolis, and then it moves every Wednesday night to a different town park with a different band, and then it'll conclude on August 18th up in Cedar Center. And while I'm on a roll, I just wanted to remind you that our fundraising Cajun Fete, the most popular summer event outside, I guess, Ironstone Concerts, but anyway, that's July 31st this year, so I encourage you to come out and, like you always do, and support that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Penny.
Thank you, Penny.
Good work on that West Point, excuse me, the railroad school. That was your job to coordinate, and it came off so perfectly.
So Steve, does this mean you threw in the towel?
Yes, on that particular day, yes.
Good morning. I'm Ingrid Brown, and now after the good news, you're going to have to hear the bad news. Anyhow, as you remember, I was here a couple months ago, and we were talking about the threat made against me. The sheriff said they would investigate my complaint, which has gone over 10 years, on for 10 years, and we went and talked to him, but nothing has been done. Anyhow, the way I feel about it, I have to come and end to this because I feel that I'm threatened, because if somebody says, sometimes I think it would be easier to settle this matter by going over there with a gun and blowing them away, and it means me, okay? This is an outright terrorist threat, which doesn't cut it anymore, okay? These people have guns. At the time this threat was made, there was a restraining order against them, and they shouldn't have guns in their house. The mother that made this threat against me is deranged. She called into the sheriff's department and said my son was parked in her driveway, which is impossible because they got a gate, and there is no way you could park in her driveway. Well, guess what? My son was arrested and put in jail for one year, when I had evidence that he wasn't even there at the time. He was in Mark Hill getting my pictures framed. Then, when I got him finally out of jail, they kept him in there 11 more days. So I think we deserve 11 days' payment for staying over in jail. Nothing ever gets investigated for the Browns. The threat is still there. The guns are still there. The people are just as crazy as they were before. I have called the sheriff seven times last week and asked how the investigation is going, and he said he would call me back. I never got a call. When I called somebody and asked him to talk to me, I expect, respect, to at least get a call back and say, oh, my mother died, or whatever, I can't talk to you, but talk to me. I live here. I pay taxes. What's wrong? Why can't I get help? Where do I got to go? Okay, I'm not going to stop. I want this woman charged for threatening my life. And if I have to go to Washington, I will, because I'm mad and I'm pissed off, and I ain't taking it anymore. I had it. So I need somebody to do something for me. And I don't want it done after I'm dead. I want it done now, because nobody can get away with threatening somebody to blow their head off and then just say, oh, I had a bad day. It doesn't cut it anymore. So some, one of you people have to get the balls and say enough is enough, and investigate this problem, because it doesn't stop. And I'll be here every week and remind you the right to protect your fellow citizens. Look at me. Do you want me to die like that? I lived through the war. I'm 76 years old. Every time I open my gate to pull out my car, I'm afraid is today the day I die? No, I don't want to end like this, okay? My husband served for this country. He had a purple heart, and he told me with his dying words, Ingrid, don't let these people get the best of you, and don't tell me to move. My house is paid for, and I will stay there, okay? So I'm asking for help. I don't know where it's coming from, but it has to come from someplace. And when I call the sheriff's department, I want an answer. Why they not helping me? And I voted today, and I hope this county will get cleaned up, and all this corruption will stop, and people can come and ask you for help. That's all I have to say to you.
Ma'am, where do you live and what's your address?
I live on 79 Cabernet.
Tom, I have a meeting with her on next Thursday.
And here, just look at this, 10 years, 10 years of harassment, 10 years.
Ingrid, bring that with you on Thursday, please.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments, otherwise I'm moving on.
Jean Lopez, Calaveras County Water District. On behalf of the Board of Directors and Staff, I want to thank the county and the supervisors for your support at the last week Congressman Lundgren's briefing. It was a great event. My water resource manager, Ed Patterson, worked closely with Congressman's office, as well as the county, put the event together. We brought together U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, U.S. Department of Agriculture, USGS Geological Survey, and FEMA to talk about ways that we can partner in the future, to really work together as a region. So it was a great event, and we look forward to many more of those and other partnerships. So thank you.
Thank you.
It's also important to note that that was a direct outcome of the visit that we did jointly in Washington to Congressman Lundgren's office, but also others. And certainly, I think Gary Taffanelli and your group, all of us who went, actually wound up with, actually, in federal terms, that meeting happened at warp speed and more. Takes usually a lot longer to get any kind of follow-up. So to find all those people in the same room only two weeks after the pitch was made, I thought was a pretty good result.
Strength in numbers.
My name's Bonnie Newman. I'm from Double Springs. I had an aha moment. I don't know if you all read this book at any time, or you're aware of it, The Prophet by Khalil Gibran, or Gibran, I'm not quite sure. When I was in college, this was the thing to read. It's kind of like a philosophical outlook on the world and everything, and it's a story of this man that goes to a land, or a country, or an island, I'm not sure, and lives among a people that are foreign to him for 10, 12 years, I don't know, and he lives among them and becomes part of them. And then one day, his ship comes to take him back to the land of his birth, and all the people come out and say, you know, you've lived among us, tell us what you've learned. And so he has like a little sermon, and he tells everybody about love, and life, and death, and every topic, you know, we have questions about. And something happened a couple weeks ago that was, I'm drawing a parallel to this. We had someone here that was like a prophet. Someone came and lived amongst us and then left. A couple weeks ago, Mr. Rooster and his wife invited Claudette Langley to dinner, a goodbye dinner for, you know, being a friend to all of us, and I was fortunate enough to be invited along, and we had a nice dinner out at that Greenhorn place over there. It was pretty nice, and as we were talking, I realized I really haven't gone anywhere and done anything. All these people had all these places they had gone to, and all these wonderful stories to tell, and I was really fortunate to sit there and listen to them. During the end of the evening, Mrs. Rooster left. She said, you know, you guys can yap all night long. I'm going home, go to bed, I'm tired. So we sat there a couple more hours, it seemed like it, and told stories. And towards the end, I don't know if it was Mr. Rooster or I, but we kind of looked at Claudette and said, you came here for two years, and now you're leaving. What do you think of all us yahoos here in Calaveras? And she said something that, well, she said, well, you would have thought we were sitting around drinking and getting high or something, but we were just sitting there drinking coffee and talking, and she says, well, I've seen a lot of people put a lot of energy into making excuses, into finding ways to not be accountable, and to not confront an issue, rather than to take that energy and put it into resolving it. And I was thinking, well, she's talking about you, and you, and you, and you, and she was talking about Mr. Rooster, and she was talking about Mr. Clapp, and she's talking about me, but mostly she was talking about herself. She shared, you know, some of her demons, and we all have demons, and I was thinking about what she had said, that when we're confronted with a choice, and we make a wrong choice, or we see a problem, and we can do some, do a couple of things. We can acknowledge that there's a problem, and we can try and solve it, or we can have a tendency, in a lot of cases, to defend our choice, our bad choice, because to admit that we were wrong means we were wrong. So we'll stick to, turn ourselves inside out to try and defend a bad position. And so I was just thinking about how we, rather than, today we're going to be making a lot of choices. We're voting. Maybe we've made some bad choices at the polls. Maybe today's a way to make it up. I would just like you to know that when and if I find out I've been shooting my mouth off, and I'm totally wrong, I'm going to come here and tell you that I've been a horse's arse, and I've just blown it right and left. And I would like to think that everyone in the county would look at what they're doing, you know, I've done right, I haven't done right, this is a good decision, that's a bad decision, rectify what we can and forge forward.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Terry Baker from Railroad Flat. I think it's a suburb of Glencoe, I'm not sure. I have some forms here that I would like to give to the supervisors. I think they already, that's their second copy, and this one is for him. Last week I was here and mentioned about maybe putting on a free concert outside, and you said it would be fine as long as I went and got a permit. Well, I went to get my permit, and this is what my permit had to...
Just a second, Mr. Baker.
Trying to figure out what you handed out.
Credit my time, please.
These aren't different copies, this is just one copy?
That's just one, I have two copies.
Oh, okay.
She had, Carol, right? Carol has a copy, and that's just one copy.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's all one copy. So there's a lot of stuff that we need to have answered. As a matter of fact...
Does he get one?
Okay. Can I start now?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I didn't realize what you had handed out.
That's okay. Last week I was here, and we were talking about having an election day concert outside, and you said it would be okay, and then told me to go get my permit. Well, they want $2,633 for us to have a little barbecue and a little, you know, play a little bit of music out here. And fill out all of this, and this, just to have a little concert. Now, my question is, is it was all for benefit, it was a benefit, and we were trying to raise money for charity. I'm wondering if the Tiger Fest paid $2,600 for their, for their party, or the concert in the park? Are you guys charging $2,600 for every concert? Or is it just me? I don't know. I'd like to find out, but anyway, getting to what Ingrid was talking about, my neighbor, Carolyn Redman, who has an illegal commercial agricultural cock ranch, has been committing a misdemeanor every single day since 9/11/07. And we've been begging you guys to do something. We have, we have written at least a half a dozen to a dozen letters to county council, to the DA, to the Board of Supervisors, everybody, and now we've never even got a response. So today, we're asking you to respond to us. We don't want to be ignored anymore. Every single time we come up here and try to talk, or try to get an answer, we might as well be talking to the wall. And, you know, you might as well just be telling me, you know, go home to your chicken coop and shut up, because that's what you've turned our piece of property into, is just a chicken coop, and we're not going to put up with it. Now, we were going to have a free barbecue out here, but if it's going to cost me $2,600 and a 30-day filing fee, then that's, you know, this was a last-minute decision. Now, we came prepared. We got the band, and we got the equipment, and we got everything out in the trailer in the parking lot. We're going to set it up. And we're going to set it up out here, and we're going to have our barbecue. Hey, if all we can do is just take pictures of it, if we can't do anything but just take pictures of it, that's all we're going to do. We won't play any music. We, we'll just set it up and break it down, because nobody's going to show up anyway. Who's going to come? All we're going to do is be entertaining ourselves, and it doesn't really, I don't care if a lot of people show up. It doesn't matter how many people show up. Some of the best times I ever had, there was just two of us. So I don't need a lot of people to have a good time. We're just going to go ahead and do it anyway. The last thing we want to do is create a disturbance for anybody, and we don't want to disturb anybody, but we do, we want to be heard. We want our answers to those questions that we've given to everybody in the county today. And hopefully, you'll let us play some music. If not, we'll just take some pictures of the, of the free election party that wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Does anyone else have an item they'd like to discuss that is not on the agenda? I'm going to go to item six, Review of Correspondence, and then I'll see about item seven when we finish eight, nine, and 10. Supervisors. Mr. Thomas.
Yes, Madam Chair. I think that hardly anyone needs a reminder that today is election day, so please go vote. And the, I, the only thing that I have on my board responsibilities is a, this week is a meeting of the Mountain County Water Resources. Mr. Patterson, that, that Mountain County's board meeting is going to occur in Folsom on Friday. My ability to go to that is kind of dependent upon our budget sessions. I'm not sure we're scheduled to go conceivably through Friday, but...
I don't think we will, but...
Okay. But anyway, that's, that's about it. Other than, I'm very pleased to see on my calendar here that my son and his family are arriving from their home in Sweden to spend about three weeks in California, so very happy about that. Anyway, that concludes my report for this week.
Mr. Tuffinelli.
My calendar is clear this week for budget hearings.
Mr. Wolinski.
CHIPS board meeting on Wednesday evening. A park and rec meeting in Moak Hill on a specific project. There may be a donor, may have a children's park that can be created there through a generous donation, and a, on Monday, the multi-jurisdictional all-group meeting is happening at Mark Twain's St. Joseph's, and contractors, co-op meeting that evening on forest issues.
Mr. Choyan.
I do not have anything in mind before the board meeting, Madam Chair.
If we're out of budget hearings early enough on Wednesday, I have a law library meeting. On Sunday, there is a fundraiser for the Calaveras Humane Society at Bretthard High School at 3 o'clock. At the California State Association of Counties, meeting last week, we had an issue before us. The association's made up of county supervisors from all 58 counties. The issue is the Local Taxpayer Public Safety Transportation Act of 2010, which is being sponsored by the League of California Cities. The league wanted the county supervisors to support the item. There was a very intense conversation. The staff's recommendation had been neutral, though when we wound up taking the vote, it wound up being a position of no position. I voted no on this, as did 23 other county supervisors. This will help our transportation system, and it all sounds well and good, but the cities will vote on it, and then they're made whole. The counties in California who provide public safety and human services will have a great deal of expense to start to carry. This is another example of ballot box budgeting. The cities of California really didn't care about the impact to the counties. This only helps the transportation component. So supervisors, if you remember when we had the booking fee issue, the counties lost on that. It will take a significant amount of money from, as I said, public safety and health and human services. The cities do not pay for those services, the counties do. So we think we're in trouble now, would be in a great deal of hurt if this issue passes. The position had been, well, it's going to pass, it sounds good, everybody's going to vote for it. Well, as we all know, it's not over till the last vote is counted. And so on behalf of this board, I did take a no position. The other supervisors who took a neutral position, there was no yes position on this at all. But under the rules of the California State Association of Counties, you need 30 counties to vote to take a position one way. So when it comes up, I probably will be looking to everyone to encourage our constituency to vote no on that. And that's all. Ms. Boyce?
Nothing to say.
Mr. Jones?
Okay.
Okay. Jeannie, we said 10:30 for budget, so I think we'll just go do eight, nine, and 10. If we have time, we'll do the close session before that. Okay, I'd like to move to item eight. I'd like to move to item eight, zoning amendment. And who's, oh, Gina, thank you.
Good morning. Gina Cathen, County Planning. Before you, you have a proposal from Habitat for Humanity to amend the zoning of an 0.8-acre parcel located in the community center of West Point, to rezone the property from unclassified to R1 in order to divide the parcel into three 11,600-square-foot parcels for future affordable housing. The planning commission did hear the item, and they are recommending that you approve the project.
Are there any questions, Gina? Did you have a question?
I don't have a question, but I do have strong support from the community, a delight that Habitat's coming back to our town, and a, and also want to mention that this is consistent with the plans for the community plan that was developed for West Point, although it hasn't yet been approved. It has no conflict with what the intent of the town is.
Okay. I have a question. On the financing, it says none.
Yes.
I've never seen a packet like this that doesn't cost money, so if you could please tell us how this is being paid for.
Yes, actually, I, I think that was probably our error. What we probably should have indicated was that the actual cost of the project was $9,784. Those were application fees that were waived by the board, and that would be general fund.
We did that a little bit.
So how is this being paid for?
Through the general fund.
Thank you. You don't have to whisper. I just, I mean, I know we're going into budget hearings, but I just think it's important we know how things are paid for. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. I'm opening up to the public. Does anyone have anything they would like to say? Is there a representative for Habitat who would like to make any comments? I'll bring...
I just wondered, are we building, or is the $9,000 for a building, or is it for a remodel or rehab, or what?
Those are the fees, Ms.... Those are the fees. That if this had been a private developer, they would have paid for the project. The Board of Supervisors is waiving those fees.
It is two basic areas. One is the rezoning of the property, which was unclassified, and a lot split into three pieces so that three Habitat homes might be built.
Okay. Any other comments? I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Walensky, did you want to take the lead on this?
Yes, I, I'm honored to make the motion to approve this.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a five-oh. Gina, thank you very much. That's the fastest land use issue I've seen go through. I'd like to...
And one of the bestest, too.
Frank, you have to stay for the whole meeting. You don't get to leave now.
I'd like to move to item nine. I'd like to move to item nine. Board direction on the sharing payment to the Upper McColomy River Watershed Authority. Ms. Boyce?
Right. This is an item that we had discussed briefly with the board a couple of months back. Calaveras County is a member of the Joint Powers Authority for the Upper McColomy River Watershed Authority. There was a budget adjustment in fiscal year '09, '10 in which there was a decision made by the JPA members to request a cost-sharing for those member counties. The regional share for Calaveras County entities is, you have a choice between $10,917 share or $13,428 share. The CCWD has paid for the county's share in advances and is seeking the board's support for reimbursement for those costs. We are a member of the JPA. I would recommend that the, the board fund this request as a member county. I think it's our obligation under the JPA, and, but you have a decision as to how you would like to fund it. It was not included in the board's budget this current year. You could direct funds from the board projects to memberships and, and pay it from there, or you could request a general fund contingency draw.
Would Supervisor Walensky sit on the JPA and do you want to make any comments?
Yes, I would, actually. We had some discussion about this a while ago, and, and just to reiterate a couple of the points, this is the only JPA that includes, that, that, there, there are a number of organizations that deal with the McColomy watershed, but this is the only one that includes both counties, water districts, and East Bay Municipal Utility District, which is the big dog in the, in the fight. And it has provided a number of products, which should be somewhat impressive to, to the organization. For instance, the East Bay Mud mostly funded, but under the auspices of this JPA, the effort to develop an assessment tool, a watershed assessment tool, that allows us to have some predictability about the impact of land use decisions on water quantity and quality. It's the most developed and probably the most technically complex watershed assessment tool around, and it has been completely calibrated for our county's section of, of the McColomy watershed. Whether we ultimately come to use it or not, that's our decision, but the fact that that tool is created is, is enough to justify the agency as it exists. We...
What do you call that tool?
It's WARMF, is the acronym, and I can't...
They did a presentation.
Yeah, they came to the board, actually, and showed us that, and it's in the hands of our planning department, which I hope it will be utilized. It's been to our, some, when we look at the number of wells that are drying up in different areas, it's to somewhat our, our own risk that we do land use decisions without thinking about water as we, as we make these choices. So, but that's not the only reason. They've done watershed, work with our kids in watershed awareness. The Salmonid Project comes out of this with the, working with several of our schools. So my hope would be that we would meet our obligations. We kind of fought our way into this. The counties were considered associate members and non-voting members of this only a few years back. So we made the argument that they should not be meeting without us. It is true that East Bay Mud carried the 80-some percent of the budget for this for a number of years, and that was based on their share of the water coming out of the watershed. They now say that they're not willing to pay 88 percent anymore, and that they would like to divide it up into thirds.
Does that mean they're willing to just take a third of the water?
We actually raised that issue at the time, but unsuccessfully.
If they receive 88 percent of the benefit, or whatever percent they're receiving, it seems to me that they certainly should be paying more than 33 percent.
I couldn't agree with you more. Regrettably, the decision of the board of the JPA was other than that. That said, there's going to be continued debate, but the fact that we were in this JPA at the time and have incurred this debt seems to be an obligation that we have to meet for this year. I would propose, by the way, that we should put this under review and develop a, a meeting with, jointly with the CCWD. My proposal would be that we take the two, take the, the member from each that's on the board, and the staff from the county, and the relevant staff from the county, and the CCWD, and jointly meet on this fairly soon and come back with a recommendation.
You probably should include the third entity in the county, too, which is what? San Andreas Water or something?
CP...
CPUD.
CPUD.
That's already paid.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be all, all the, all the county entities would come together, and, and I think we need to have a joint position that we take back there. I'm not satisfied with this arrangement.
I support that.
But I, I also recognize our obligations.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments before I open it to the public? Yes. Mr. Patterson, you had something you wanted to say?
First, let me thank you for the opportunity to comment.
And second, could you identify...
Ed Patterson, Water Resources Manager for Calaveras County Water District.
Thank you.
I've been intimately involved with UMRRA since about 2004, and Supervisor Walensky correctly summarized the opportunities and the actions that UMRRA provides for the community. However, Supervisor Walensky left out one area that I see is a very important resource management opportunity, and that is through these integrated regional water management planning efforts that the state has made it clear they're moving in and are becoming more, instead of just encouraging, they're actually becoming more of a regulatory-type approach to developing these IRWMPs. So there, there is a regulatory aspect to it, but there is a, a carrot, and such that the county, in cooperation with CCWD and the JPA, could stand to receive millions of dollars through various grant programs with, with an adopted IRWMP. We have one that was adopted in 2006 that's making us eligible to possibly bring in millions of dollars into the West Point community for infrastructure improvements and other resource management needs in this county. Cosgrove Creek, which is inching along, probably would score very high in a competition and be an opportunity to actually bring, excuse me, millions of dollars in for that project when it's ready for whatever comprehensive solution that is developed by the community. So the IRWMP is very important, and UMRRA is taking on that activity. Similarly, the Tuolumne Stanisloss south of us, for the Stanisloss area, is doing the same thing through an MOU, so I encourage the county to keep that in mind as well. And as far as budget goes, I echo Supervisor Tryon's comment about the, you know, the volumetric diversions that East Bay Mud makes from the watershed. It is a somewhat complicated area, and such that there are a, a number of agencies involved, and each has a vote on the full UMRRA board. And when we get into cost-sharing discussions, it's very tough to try to equitably handle. If you do have one vote, how do you pay for that vote? And this is very true of the IRWMP process as well. You know, a lot of environmental groups feel they should be paid to attend rather than pay along with some of the agencies, and these are ongoing discussions that we continue to have. There's no easy solution. But last year, East Bay Mud announced they were only going to pay one-third. There was quite a bit of discussion that, that is not equitable. This year, for the straw man budget for fiscal year '10, '11, I think the proposal on the table is that East Bay Mud pays 50 percent, and the two regions of Amador and Calaveras each split the other 50, and, you know, so it's 25, 25. We're moving in a direction where we think that it's more equitable, but at the same time, some of the argument in response to bringing East Bay Mud back the full 88 and a half percent as well, we want, with the additional cost sharing that we provide, our vote somehow means more. I don't know if that actually carries forward solidly in a literal argument, but there, I understand that argument that when you pay money, your vote's there, and it, and it really counts, rather than East Bay Mud carrying the full JPA. So I appreciate the opportunity that the county is willing to commit to in reimbursing CCWD. I think it helps forge our, our partnership, and I think we have great opportunities. I am really impressed with our new general manager, working with Jeannie Boyce. I think there's a lot of good things coming, and I think through this JPA and through our federal efforts, I think there's millions of dollars, too, that are going to be coming in to help us meet a lot of needs in this county. And if I have, if there's any other question on behalf of the answer.
I have one. Steve, did you...
I'd just add one, one other argument, now that you've inspired that, which is that if they have made, if we made the argument that they should pay 88 percent based on their water draw, I, at least, the, the silver lining and the dark economic cloud on this would be that we at least have a moral argument that we now are, should be eligible for 25 percent of the water, or 33 percent in this last year. So I, while it's not a great argument, and not one likely to be heard, there, there is going to be, this is a forum in which that kind of discussion can take place, and I think that's valuable to preserve.
And what East Bay Mud responds to these budgeting discussions is that most of the projects benefit the up-country area. And while there may be some truth to that, I, I think that East Bay Mud definitely earns quite a bit of benefit. So what we'd like to do for future fiscal year budget cycles is that we get together ahead of time. I think that's a great recommendation, that before anything's adopted budget-wise, that internally within the Calaveras region, which includes Calaveras Public Utility District, we have an internal discussion about what we think best, that then Supervisor Walensky could present to the UMRRA board for a good, you know, decision in the future. Thanks.
Mr. Patterson, my question is, are you saying that the JPA is now going to become an IRWP?
Yes.
Like Tuolumne is?
Yes, it already is.
So you'll be a recognized one with the Department of Water Resources as a, and how do you form that? How are you doing that?
It's already been done. The region was accepted through DWR's Regional Acceptance Program. UMRRA is the recognized MAC IRWMP board and author for this Proposition 84 update that's already underway.
So that's going to be for Amador, Calaveras, for the McColomy River one?
Yes, the, the upper, upper McColomy. Right.
Fine, thank you. Are there any other, are there any other questions, Mr. Patterson? Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this? I want to bring it back to the board for, did you have some? Thank you.
I'm delighted for Valley Springs. Yeah, we were talking about Assessment District. Now, is that talking about taxes, too? Or a district that can later on tax us? Because every time you guys get an Assessment District, it seems like somewhere down the line I get taxed.
No, no...
I don't think that the word Assessment District came up.
No, you were talking about an assessment tool.
Yes. It's a, oh, I'm sorry.
It's a different...
What, what we're talking about is a scientific analysis of the impacts of surface activity on water quality and quantity. It's an assessment tool, not an Assessment District. It's a scientific method of determining...
I see what you mean by his silver tongue like Virgil. That was a compliment. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Let's go.
I have a comment. This JPA has morphed tremendously from when, from what its objective was when it was formed. I feel I'm going to vote for this. I'm not sure which option one or option two, and what fund at the moment, because I feel that a commitment was made as we are members of the JPA. I mean, I don't know how steep he voted for this, but he, it's like this board, you know, you get three votes, that's, it's a wrap.
That's Stephen.
But when we go into our budget deliberations, I guess I would want to be convinced that this is something we should be budgeting for for the coming year. We just approved a $900, $9,700 wave for a project that this board is supportive of, that the general fund's paying for, that somewhere $10,000 or $13,000 is another general fund cost. So those are things that we're going to be looking for this, you know, in this coming year, as well, starting this morning. So I don't, I feel like we've made a commitment, and we need to honor that commitment. So I guess I'd be looking to Steve to see, is he talking option one or option two, because I'm not sure what, which one he's wanting. In terms of where it comes from, I think it should come from the board budget funds. I don't believe it should come from contingency. I believe there is money in board project funds for the '09, '10 budget year to pay for this. So those are, those are my thoughts. I don't know, Steve, what yours are.
All right. Well, I'd like to make a, a specific proposal in the form of a motion, which is that we take the amount of $10,917 to pay for the county's part of the regional share of the Upper McColomy River Watershed Authority's fiscal year '09, '10 budget. Secondly, that this come out of general fund contingency, and the reason for that is this is a JPA, and we...
is a JPA, and we pay JPA fund fees in a number of ways, and always it has come out of the general fund, not board projects. I would hate to see this be the only thing that we do that way, although I'm interested in the argument. Thirdly, that as part of this motion, that we direct staff to arrange at their earliest convenience a meeting between the CCWD, the CPUD, and the county, both administrative representatives and the board delegates to the JPA, to meet, to determine Calaveras county interests in relation to this coming year's participation and contribution to the UMRRA.
Could you break it down?
Three, that, make it a-
I mean, I'll tell you why.
You're moving to separate, I'll do that. So I'll make a motion to approve the amount of $10,917 to pay for-
The first thing you better do is figure out where it's coming from.
Well, it's all general fund money, Tom. It's all general fund, whether it's board projects or contingencies.
I'm willing to support Steve's motion with the exception that I want it to come from board projects, not from contingencies.
That's why I asked him.
So I would like to solve that first, so I know whether I'm voting for the rest of it or not.
Okay.
Okay, then, before we go into this, as part of the discussion on the motion, I'd request information as to how this would happen, since we each have very different sums in our board project.
We would just take the total sum and divide it across all five districts, and just move it to memberships and pay it out of memberships from the board's budget. There's enough in there-
For each member to pay a fair-
Right, to pay a share.
Okay.
Okay, to pay their, a fair share across-
Of $10,000.
Yes, $2,000 each, basically.
All right.
So that's there.
Out of a classification called memberships, that's-
What we would do is we'd move it to memberships and pay it, because that's where we would usually pay a membership.
As a member of the JPA.
Just, that's an internal departmental-
Are we paying through those memberships any other JPA costs?
I believe-
Area 12, any of the-
No, we pay the Area 12-
Out of-
Through the contributions budget. So we can talk about the logistics next year. This is something that was not budgeted in the current year. So next year, I think we need to talk about where we place the fees to participate in the JPA should decide to continue. But I think for the current year, it's either a general fund contingency draw or utilizing unexpended current year funds.
Well, if it's a contingency, we need four votes.
That's correct.
If not, we need three.
That's correct.
I think I've already lost that possibility, so-
Maybe not, maybe not. To my recollection, the only thing that we have done prior to this consideration out of tapping the board funds was the contribution, the $6,000 contribution for the senior center.
As a board.
Yeah, and at that time, there was, I don't know, round numbers, about $46,000, as I recall, as an aggregate in the various funds. But my share of that, the remaining portion, was about $10,000, and I think Gary's was about $10,000, Tom had about $2,000, or I may be a little bit off on that, but I'm kind of sensitive to the fact that that is going to take, I don't know, seemingly the disproportionate share of this contribution out of those members who have been more frugal about maintaining their funds so that we could do something with them.
You're saying there's enough in each of them?
Yeah, when I checked with Karen Barney, there was enough on each of those accounts to cover the cost. So it's simply an option, general fund money.
You're saying that it would be $2,000 out of each fund?
Yes, that's correct.
All of us have is a minimum $2,000 in our council.
Well, it would appear that, because two members of the board have already expressed their desire, that the possibility of four votes for coming out of contingencies no longer exists. Therefore, I will amend my motion. I withdraw the original, and I will substitute the following. That $10,917 be paid to Calaveras County Water District for our share of the regional cost of the Upper McColty River Watershed Authority's fiscal year '09-'10 budget, and that would come out of board projects, and that finally, we instruct staff to hold, to develop a joint meeting between all the Calaveras participants in order to determine and make recommendations back to this board what our position will be in the coming year.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a five-o. Thank you. I'd like to move to Item 10, the resolution authorizing borrowing of funds for 2011 for the TRANs. Oh, thank you.
Good morning, Shirley Ryan, County Administrative Office. On May 25th, the Administrative Office and Government Financial Strategies, which is the county's financial advisors, did a presentation to the board about the issuance of a 2010-11 TRAN, or Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note, showing the benefits of a TRAN versus internal borrowing. At the conclusion of the presentation, the board directed the Administrative Office to move forward with the TRAN, and we have been working on that. What you have before you today is the required resolution in order to issue and authorize the issuance of that TRAN. Also attached was sample of the TRAN note agreement, purchase agreement, as well as the TRAN note itself. Those are only samples. The resolution provides for a TRAN up to $15 million. However, from the cash flows that we have been reviewing, it looks like the TRAN will be about $7.3 million. Also attached to the board packet is copies, pages from the preliminary official statement. If you'll recall, Jonathan Edwards with Government Financial Strategies indicated the importance of reviewing those pages and providing any corrections or revisions. So if the board should adopt the resolution today authorizing the issuance of the TRAN, we request that you review that preliminary official statement and provide any comments or concerns to our office by noon on June 14th.
Okay. Are there any discussions or questions by the board? Are there any discussions, questions, or comments from the public? I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move the resolution, Madam Chair.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes on a five-o. Thank you.
I'm going to put a session in.
Do you want a meeting?
Thank you.
For Depp Walk. The board just met in closed session pursuant to Government Code 54956.9, a conference with labor negotiations for SEIU, DSA, CCP, SDA, with our Director of Human Resources, and we have nothing to report. I'd like to move to the budget. We are just going to be going on an overview. There will be no deliberations done today, and I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Boyce, RCAO.
Thank you. Today, we're going to talk about the fiscal year 2010-11 proposed budget for Calaveras County. We will be doing an overview, primarily focusing on the general fund and general economic trends that influence the budget. The budget was developed looking at the most recent financial trends, as well as our known data, and having to hedge our bets on what the state will do in terms of the state budget deficit, which remains at 19.1 at this point in time. I'd like to begin by reviewing with the board some of the board's budget principles. And as you can see, this board has always been conservative in revenue estimates. You've tried to avoid one-time solutions. Public safety's been the highest priority. There's been a real move to try to control personnel costs, to ensure that the state funding that is promised is reliable, to minimize general fund contributions to non-general fund programs, to look at fees annually, to ensure that we have a healthy reserve in contingency, and to design a budget structure that supports a diverse, prosperous, and sustainable economy. You also had instructed for many years to pursue grants. And as we talk about all these different issues, you'll see as the budgets get tighter and tighter, this is the third year of cuts, three years ago, budgets were cut 10%, the last two years 17.25%. It's increasingly difficult to adhere to these budget principles, and in hard and fast terms. The budget process itself, and I'd like to thank the department heads, the fiscal and clerical staff, who really struggled to put forth recommendations for cuts. I was thinking about this budget document, and I really think if the pages could talk, these pages would be weeping. The budget is, as proposed, is balanced structurally. We have a total all-fund budget of $144,354,090. This represents a decrease of 1.7% from fiscal year '09-'10, with appropriations reduced by $2,474,107. The proposed general fund total is $56,106,639, which is decreased by $3,324,556 as compared to the last fiscal year. And these totals include $20 million for the new jail project. As you can see, contingencies continue to drop. We're estimating contingencies at $396,78. Again, this is an estimate, depending on how the year-end closes and what the actuals are, this number could be more or less. The proposed budget does not meet the board's goal of a strong, healthy contingency. We always strive for at least 3% or 4%, and our contingency is really at 1.1. The reserve remains at $2 million, which is where it's been for the last few years. I'd like to remind the board how we began the budget development process in the fiscal year '09-'10. When we did the mid-year review, revenues were in the tank. We were estimated to receive about $1,084,000 less than we had anticipated. At that time, we also, our expenditures were trending down, and the net was that we thought by the end of the year, we would be at a loss of about $717,000. The board took a number of actions to address that estimated deficit. You, as a board, decided not to make the transfer to reserve that you had intended to as part of the final budget '09-'10, instead utilizing those funds to bridge the gap, as well as tapping into the contingency, which was at $405,000 at that time. Since then, there have been a number of draws on contingency, and departments have done a good job of curtailing expenditures or estimating a balance of about $240,537 for cash. But you'll see where we have done some runtime revenue enhancements that will increase that contingency for fiscal year 10-11. As a starting point to address the $3.1 million budget gap, there were a number of factors that played into how we arrived at that estimated general fund deficit. Those included limited prior year cash, as you can see with the diminishing contingency fund, reduced transit occupancy collections, reduced interest income. The big one is a 10% reduction in the property tax rolls, which also results in a decline in vehicle license fees. We were estimating high unemployment to continue. We knew that the salary and benefit costs were going, that were negotiated as part of the '09-'10 budget, were going to expire June 30th, and those were some of the employee negotiated concessions with public safety, as well as some of the concessions that were funded through AB443 and the vehicle license fees that were a part of the budget deal '09-'10 to reduce the '09-'10 deficit. And with, we also had a loss of revenue coming from the A7, reimbursed expenses from non-general fund departments to the general fund. In order to address that deficit, the board gave direction to general fund departments to reduce their general fund contributions by 17.5%. At that time, the board recognized and acknowledged that across the board reductions were less than optimal. They, in some cases, were not feasible due to state and federal mandates and special circumstances, as well as the board's priorities. In terms of proceeding with how to address the deficit, this proposed budget has the following cost reductions. It is with a lot of pain and gut-wrenching decisions by department heads and staff as to how best to meet the 17.5% cut. There were a number of departments who reduced positions, who eliminated positions, who staff voluntarily decided to work less time or take a demotion. Staff is utilizing voluntary time off, which results in unpaid time. And it was all done, I think, as calmly as it could be, but certainly very painful for all involved in the decision-making. The recommendations that are on the table are, are barely submitted under protest, I would say. Nobody would willingly put these on the table if there was money to be had. What's before you is really the general fund. Primarily, there are layoffs of 18.2 positions for a savings of $1.1 million. It unfunds 12.1 positions. There are other actions, as I described, with folks taking demotions or voluntary time off and perhaps bumping that result in additional savings of $23,000-260,000. We have 34 positions that are on the position control list that have been vacant. They continue to be unfunded, and with other operating cost reductions of about $421,068 for a total of $2,440,629 in savings. We looked for one-time revenue enhancements to help the cash. We looked at utilizing health realignment dollars that could be shifted to social services for increased caseload costs. That's allowable per state statute. We had discussed doing this with the board at mid-year for the current year, and we are suggesting that the board make this transfer for fiscal year 10-11. This shift in health realignment will require a public hearing, and we'll come back to the board on the 22nd if the board agrees with our recommendation. But that would result in $163,371 that could be used that would assist the general fund. We were able to hunt down the ING money that was, has been owed to us for many, many years, resulting in a commitment from Orange County to repay $371,000 this year. Orange County does still retain some funds owed the county for storage costs that they incur for criminal records because the ING trial case is still on appeal. We did, and are suggesting the deferral of setting aside one-seventh of the payroll. We were putting money aside for every seven years, you'll have an extra payroll period, and we had been putting aside one-seventh every year for the last three years in anticipation. Seven years from now, we would have that money set aside to pay for that extra payroll period. We're asking the board to not proceed with that at this time, and have incurred, put the revenue down $125,000 in revenue for a total of $659,371. The total- The total being gets us to our $3.1 million general fund deficit.
Jeanne, this, the budget memo, I thought said we have to go $3.3 or $3.1?
Well, the deficit is $3.1.
Okay, fine, thank you.
What I'd like to do is have Clay speak to what's happening in terms of our construction and development activity that generates revenue for the general fund, as well as some of our economic trends, because you will see how the economy has drastically affected not only Calaveras County, but of course statewide and the nation. And we are no stranger to the negative impacts of what's been happening since, really, for about the last three years. So with Clay, if you'll take us through that.
Thank you. Morning. Taking through two analyses. The first is a construction development analysis, and the second is a consumer economic analysis. And you can see the relative strength and weakness of the county budget tied to the economy. It's no surprise, as you go through these trends, you can see how the weakness of the general fund in particular has really come to the service. So first, thank you for just behind me, number two ago. This looks at construction activity for the last seven years in terms of revenues, valuation, and permits for construction activity. And as we go through this, you can see how the three are closely tied together. The number of permits drives revenue received. Revenue received is driven by valuation, valuation of new construction permits. So we just took a point in time, seven years ago, '02, '03, you could see we were sitting at about $2.2 million year-end actual, and we're sitting in '09-10 at $892,000 in terms of revenue, about almost a 60 percent drop. The valuation, that's the valuation of the construction permits for all activities, remodels, new homes, everything. $161 million, that's now gone down to only $26 million current year. And permits, you can see the drop. Those numbers, the 789 was a year-end actual. All those numbers are, particularly the revenue, are flat for '11. So you can see how devastating that is. You can probably see this right tail declining curve. That curve is just represented in nearly every single, with very few exceptions, revenue sources, and not only the total county budget of the $140 million, but also $56 million of the general fund budget. So you'll see this very familiar trend as we go through budget hearings. Same right tail declining curve. This looks, however, at the number of permits in the bars, and you can see as permits decline, obviously so does valuation, and so does net revenue to the general fund. An economic analysis. This looks at a couple of different things that are really intertwined. One is reflective of the county's consumer retail activity and its strength. And the second, it also reflects the relative strength and weakness of the state economy in terms of consumer retail sales. Let's do that one minute. Population, we've grown from almost 43,000 to almost 48,000, picking a point in time '02, '03. Unemployment from 8.5 percent to 17.1. Consumer retail revenue, that's the total of all consumer retail and property transfer activity. This includes everything from the old Prop 172, absent sales tax, that we've historically received in the county budget since the mid-'90s, also inclusive of county retail sales activity and the revenue received, and also a smattering of fees dispersed through all of the budgets. So you can see we've gone from basically $4 million to just a little, almost a little less, so we're flat. So in other words, the functioning of the county's revenue in terms of economic prosperity, if you would, retail sales, we're performing at, more closer to the '03 economy in '09. And these numbers are all flat in '10. So it's pretty bright. Sales taxes, that's reflective of the county's sales tax growth, it's pretty flat. And then Proposition 172 is reflective of statewide extension of the absent sales tax with Public Safety is also flat. Increasing unemployment, and these were numbers taken from EDB as of January each year, not seasonally adjusted. And sales taxes, this being reflective of county consumer retail strength. And you can see how the percentage of the general fund, which is interesting, you'll see as we go through budget hearings, the proportion of revenues in the total county budget and the general fund budget, those percentages are declining through a lot of different reasons. One is excessive cutting and lower revenue, and then the budget changing because of capital improvement expenditures loaded into the budget. So you can see that right tail declining curve, that's so typical of nearly all the revenue sources. And the benefit of doing this is we should be looking this, looking at this to project next year. And the numbers are pretty obvious. Consistently all the way through '07, '08, the economy started to slow, and that's occurred through the current year and projected into '10-11. So the strength of this data is we should be using this to forecast the following year and then monitor that month by month, week by week during the current year. So this shouldn't be a surprise next year when the governor says we're looking at perhaps from a $4 to $7 billion revenue deficit again, that confirmed by the legislative analyst office, that we should be looking at these transfer forecasts next year. It should not be a surprise to us. Little different curve where we had '06, '07 was really the high point of this seven or eight-year period, and then again started to decline, again reflective of consumer retail strength. High unemployment, people out of work, people spending less money, not only in the county, but reflective of the statewide allocation that we get for 172. And then this looks at that statewide allocation to the county for Prop 172, the old absent sales tax decision. Little different curve there, the strength relative of the state maintained until '07, '08, just started to decline in '08, '09. So you can see how we need the economy to get Calaveras in '06, '07, '07, '08, and how relatively weak we were compared to the state. So based on this kind of data, we were much more sensitive to the economy locally than was reflective of the statewide consumer recoveries, which is half surprising, because in all the years we've all talked, we've always generally said we're about 18 years behind San Francisco Bay area economy, but I think this suggests perhaps we're probably right on that leading edge between small rural counties with a marginal budget investment.
One of the biggest hits to the county is the property tax decline, and that's in part due to the housing collapse. And our acting assessor has informed us that although she hates to make predictions, she's anywhere from seven, predicting a 7% to 10% decline in assessed valuation. We've taken the 10%, and you can see here in terms of the overall, well, this is looking at the contingencies, but in terms of property tax, there's a significant decline in revenue to the general fund through that. Looking at this general fund contingency chart, you can see how, as a percentage of the general fund total expenditures, we've been utilizing our general fund contingencies As we look at contingencies and other, some of our selective fiscal trends, I'll wait till Zach, there you go. You can see how contingencies from '03, '04, where we were budgeted at 2.8 percent of the budget, at $787,055, down to $450,000 in '09-10. And then for the current year, utilizing some one-time revenue enhancements, we've managed to predict an estimated $396,007.8. But again, we are relying on some of those one-time solutions to help provide cash.
Some will solve the INGS.
Yeah, that's right. It's really quite frightening. We've already seen that, so. One of the things when we look at what's happening overall countywide in terms of increased expenditures that impact all departments is our high unemployment and higher total insurance expenditures overall for not only unemployment, but also our premiums and liability insurance. '03, '04, our insurance expenditures were $1.4 million approximately, and in '09-10, we're up to $2,376,411, a 66 percent increase. At this time, the insurance costs represent 4% of the general fund expenditures. And here's a chart which gives you another way to look at that in terms of overall percentage of the total general fund expenditures, and you can see we've had some highs in '04, '05, and then a dip in '08, '09, and then increasing expenditures as unemployment has risen, and we've had litigation and other expenses that hit our insurance funds.
Could you list the insurances that are covered under that chart? Is unemployment, health?
Unemployment, health, liability, workers' comp. What's that? Pop rate, medical, drug, just, that's right.
All.
Yeah, all.
Everything.
Everything. In terms of general liability costs, the premiums in '03, '04 were about $152,893. You can see in '09-10, that rose to $379,301, the big jump in premiums. You have to remember, too, this is post-9/11, when all insurance costs began to drift upwards. Our liability costs in '03, '04, $245,995. In '09-10, $612,250, as you can see, another 149 percent increase. So we have significant increases in our insurance budget. And here, it just gives you another way to look at the spikes in premiums and liability expenditures over time. And we don't, we are not on a trajectory, unfortunately. The CSAC Access Insurance Authority recommends funding above the 80 percent confidence level. We have looked at our actuarial, and they recommend funding between, you know, 80 and 85 percent. The 80 percent confidence level is the $974,000. The 85 percent confidence level is $1,42,000. Currently, in the '10, '11 budget, we've budgeted for $4,701, we're at an 82 percent confidence level. We feel that's a prudent place for our insurance budget to be at. Premiums, and again, another breakdown, this time with workers' comp. We're seeing increased workers' comp cases. It's been my experience that as the workload shrinks and there's more work to be shared and people seem to be a little bit more burdened, that sometimes the workers' comp cases increase, and we have accidents happen, people are tired. Premiums have increased from eight, I'm sorry. It's okay. From $855,806 to over $1,001. So again, you can see these trends that, again, impact all program budgets through A87. Here's another chart to look at the workers' comp cases. You can see the county entered into a contract with company Nurse Francine, that was in '06, '07, or, and you can see how that has resulted in decreased worker compensation costs until we began to creep up again in '09-10. Unemployment, we continue to have increasing unemployment costs, partially due to layoffs, partially due to the fact that there's been multiple extensions through federal legislation to extend benefits. We anticipate there'll be future costs with future layoffs. The unemployment costs in '09-10 were $564,661. We're projecting about $800,000 in unemployment costs in '10-11. Our average costs in '07, '08 and '08, '09 were about $156,649. So you can see that tremendous increase in our unemployment. In terms of our general fund reserve, you can see that we have maintained our reserve. In '03, '04, it was 1.7 million approximately to approximately $2 million in '09-10. Again, the board has been very diligent about not tapping into the reserve. In fact, last year, we hoped to add to that reserve. Unfortunately, that was not possible, given the unexpected sharp decline in revenue for the current year. Fund balance with cash carry, which is unexpended cash from the prior year, again, is, has gone significantly. So in '03, '04, we were ending with a fund balance of approximately $3.4 million, and this year, '09-10, looking at $186,542. Again, the contingency that we have included in the proposed budget includes not only cash carry, but also the one-time revenue stopgap measures that we talked about earlier. This shows you another graph of the general fund reserve as relates to the fund balance. And once again, you can see general fund reserve stays, actually increased, stayed about the same through '08, '09. The fund balance declined precipitously. Some of the issues with revenue are that we expect to see declining revenues. We don't see a lot of hope on the horizon. Some of this is tied to the lack of the state budget, a state budget deficit, and not being able to predict what the state may do in terms of legislative action that will impact us. We are seeing a delay in the receipt of state and federal reimbursable revenues, although we are not subject to some of the cash management deferrals that other counties are as part of the Budget Trainer Bill that was signed earlier this spring. Nonetheless, we are seeing the state hold on to the funds, their cash longer, and taking a longer time to send it to the county. There is a need for grants and other types of non-general fund revenues to fund services. Departments have been very proactive in terms of finding grants, trying to apply for grants. It is a double-edged sword, as you have less discretionary money, you have less available cash to provide the local match, or the required match, for some of these federal and state grants that require a local match. So that's becoming an interesting dilemma, and we need to look at how we leverage funds, how we allocate funds to be able to leverage larger dollars. For example, in the FEMA grants, which fund infrastructure, there's a 20 percent match. The USDA grants, which can fund emergency management, personnel, equipment, emergency planning, there's a 50 percent match. So there's opportunities to leverage funds, but we've got to be able to identify funds to be able to provide that match. Absent non-general fund revenues, you know, the budget will likely see reduced financial leverage. You have, at a certain point in time, you don't have the buck to match, to get the federal buck, and so, you know, that's a hard place to be, but unfortunately, it's a reality of the revenue picture in the state. Other revenue items are that the A87 revenue from non-general fund departments is declining. You know, as non-general fund staff shrinks and there's, there's less work being done by general fund departments to charge to non-general funds, those funds are no longer available to offset some of the costs, indirect costs, whether it be for insurance, county council, administration, auditor control, et cetera. The realignment revenue for health, mental health, and social services is another one of those revenues that's highly dependent on the economy. Those revenues are sales tax and VLE, suggest when the need for health and human services and the caseloads are skyrocketing due to unemployment. The revenue sources- The revenue sources that pay for those services are also declining. So it makes for a very difficult road. We've been fortunate that we have built contingencies since the early 90s, when we had the last huge decline in realignment for the rainy day, and we have been tapping into the health contingency funds significantly. And I don't see that changing this year next. In terms of the state budget, there continues to be a 19.1 billion dollar deficit. The governor has issued his May revise. He has made it very clear that he will not sign a budget without state budget reform or pension reform. He has also said, no new taxes. His proposals really primarily focus on cutting health and human services, to a large degree, eliminating some funding for CalWorks and Human Services, shifting monies from mental health to social services. He depends on quite a bit of money from the federal government and through the ARRA. Senate Democrats have said, well, we don't really like the governor's proposal very much, and if we're going to offer our own proposal. So they've offered a proposal to extend some of their tax increases, to make some program reductions, but have issued some information that talks about realigning programs from the state to the counties. And this was done in the early 90s with realignment. And essentially, when the state talks about realigning programs to the counties, it usually means that the counties will pick up a larger share of cost than the state currently picks up. Although, there are also opportunities that can be built into realignments that give counties more flexibility. So there may be an opportunity to influence some of those discussions so that if, in fact, there are cost shifts and realignment of programs to counties, that we ensure that there's a revenue source to go with that shift. The governor, in his proposal, is proposing to shift some of the lower-risk offenders from state prisons to county jails, also juveniles who are placed in state facilities to make them a responsibility of county probation. There has been some discussion, and there is discussion in the governor's May revise, as to some available funding for that, but there are no details regarding what that might be, whether it's 11,500 per inmate or 15,000 per juvenile, for what period of time. We still don't have any information on that. The Assembly Democrats have another proposal in response to both the May revise and the governor's, I mean, excuse me, the Senate Democratic proposal, whereby they would like to create jobs by doing some multi-step borrowing and securitization and avoid the elimination of programs. That proposal has not met with great enthusiasm thus far, but all three proposals are currently under discussion through the Budget Conference Committee meeting, which began last week. It's unclear whether, how much influence the Budget Conference Committee will have in terms of the ultimate budget negotiations that will occur with the Big Five, which is the governor, the president pro tem, the assembly speaker, and the minority leaders of both the Senate and the Assembly. The indications that I received in Sacramento last week is that it could be a very long, hot summer before any budget deals are cut. But there are a lot of discussions going on, but there is not a whole lot of agreement as to how to solve this 19.1 trillion dollar deficit. The longer it takes for the state to make their decisions negatively impacts us. You know, we really need to make decisions early to be able to make sure that our revenues can meet our expenditures and not continue to spend money that ultimately we will not be reimbursed for. Before I talk about the recap, I want to go back a little bit to the ramifications of the 17.5 percent cut and how we are recommending or the recommendations that are included, because the recommendations do include proposed layoffs. The county and the board has indicated that you would like to retain as many jobs as possible. Negotiations are underway with our labor organizations. We have not reached any agreements to date. So absent any agreements or concessions, the layoff notices have gone out. They went out in May to provide employees with a 30-day notice. The effective date of the layoffs is June 18th. Should layoffs impact a number of departments, from auditor, controller, assessor, human resources, county council, treasurer, tax collector, public health, the district attorney, probation, sheriff, public works, some of the layoffs are also just a reduction in time and not a full position. But clearly, these are big cuts, and it will impact services. There's no way around it. The departments and their staffs are working together to figure out how they can share resources, where they might really focus in on core services and decide how best to serve the public with the amount of money available. For folks who want to downsize government, government, the workforce will be reduced. And we're looking at about 64.3 allocated positions in 2010-11. We don't see the economy turning around anytime soon. We expect to have another, at least a couple of years, of brutal budgets. There isn't a whole lot of hope on the horizon for anybody to come bail us out. We can't manufacture our own money. Currently, there's 18.2 employee positions on the layoff list, 12.1 positions that are currently vacant and will not be funded, and 34 positions that were not funded in nine ten that will not be funded in 10 11. There are other positions, again, that have been reduced or are vacant, or people have taken voluntary demotions, voluntary time off. A whole host cadre of different decisions have been made to try to make the cut. There are a couple of issues with public safety and law enforcement. The sheriff, as part of his proposal to meet 17.5, included a reduction in staff for five correctional officers. We met with the sheriff, and after looking at the state mandates and the requirements of jail staffing, it was just not prudent to make those reductions. So included in the general fund proposed budget before you is the cost of five correctional officers for a total of 359,831 dollars, because to lay those folks off would increase our liability and our risk, and it just made no sense. The courts have raised another issue with regards to the release of inmates from the jail due to bed jail capacity issues. There's been an expressed need to implement some changes as to how inmates are released or selected for release, and this led to discussions about electronic monitoring and alternative sentencing or alternative to incarceration. Tomorrow, as part of the sheriff, law enforcement, criminal justice group, the sheriff, probation, and the district attorney will be talking to you about electronic monitoring and how we might implement that. It will take additional resources. It will require an additional position to be funded, or at least eliminate a layoff in probation for about a cost of about $71,000, as well as equipment that could be paid for using the Criminal Justice Facility Fund. But we'll get more into that tomorrow. For the other departments, the land use, general government, administration, finance, health and human services, I don't think anyone goes unscathed in terms of feeling the impact of personnel reductions, operating cost reductions. It's a grim time. We have been able to rely upon teeter funding to upgrade our technology and the upgrades that are needed to make us more efficient for our technology infrastructure. That has been extremely important. When we look forward to this budget, it is balanced with a contingency of 396,078 dollars. That could go a little bit higher if, in fact, our cash carry is higher than we expect. I think Shirley gets the award for being the best estimator of cash carrying that this county's ever seen. She has been pretty close most years. As I said before, the overall size of county government has been reduced. The county's financial status is tenuous, as are most counties currently throughout the state. There continue to be significant financial threats due to the state budget deficit and how those deficits are going to be addressed, that we continue to monitor, continue to keep our hand on the pulse in Sacramento so that we can explain the impacts of various proposals, so that we can at least try to get the legislature to understand how devastating some of the revenue reductions can be. There's a potential for significant cost shifts that could impact the general fund, once again. Although additional expenditure reductions are highly likely due to the revenue declines and state funding reductions and cost shifts, I think we just have to expect that going into final. We will have adjustments between now and final budget. We really focused on the general fund. The other funds are balanced. Probably the health fund and CalWorks and Human Services, those funds, you know, could see changes as the state budget deficit is addressed. And we will come back at final with more discussion about all the other non-general funds, but they are balanced. So with that, I leave you with the grim news. I wish I could tell you it was going to improve tremendously, but I don't, we don't see that in trends. And the best we can do is do our due diligence with monitoring our county finances, ensuring that monies owed to us are recouped, and as, pay attention to details, because the details are going to be extremely important. So with that.
Are there any questions or comments? I have one. The transferring of realignment funds. Since the general fund's all we really have control over, I think that's the good news. But when you listen to what's happening and the cuts that are going to be taken in our health and human services, is that wise that we do that?
Well, we built a reserve in health services. You know, there were a number of years we didn't fill positions, and we accrued reserves. So if we didn't have to, I wouldn't recommend we do it. But as a stopgap measure, I am recommending that we, because your families, I mean.
I mean, it could impact general assistance, which.
We're going to take realignment, and we're going to pay for those increased caseload costs in CalWorks and Human Services that otherwise would be a general fund cost. And we're going to back out general fund money so that you'll be able to use that general fund money for other purposes.
I understand. I guess I just get concerned that we're putting, all the counties are balancing everything on the backs of health and human services, and it would have an impact on the county, and it will have an impact on general fund.
Oh, absolutely. At a certain point, at a certain point, there's not realignment money. And there's another kind of wild card in here with healthcare reform, as healthcare reform is implemented in the out years, and folks that are currently obligation under section 17,000, some of those folks will be eligible for an expanded Medicare program. They're looking at using the realignment dollars to pay for that expanded Medicare program. So there could be significant shifts in the amount of realignment revenue we receive. Our realignment revenue for health does pay for our county medical services program costs, which are about 1,001 a year, and also, it also pays for our public health services, our communal health disease, I mean, our health officer. And should all those funds be shifted back to the state to help pay for healthcare reform, that's a whole nother new quagmire for us to address. But it hasn't happened yet, but those are things that are out there in the ethers that are being talked about. So that's why it's so critical that we pay attention to what's happening in Sacramento.
And the one more I have, the 12.1 positions. It says unfunded 12.1.
That should say funded.
But it's 12.1 that are funded.
That's correct.
So we eliminate the 12.1 and add it to the 18.2.
Right, there's no bucks.
The 34 are unfunded, so I'm going to just expand that.
Right, that's correct.
Excuse me, and there's one more. I think this is my third one more.
It's okay.
The interdepartmental transfers. I was not clear on one. It doesn't tell me from where to where.
A number of departments made transfers of folks from one budget unit to the other. Probably, the sheriff gets the award, I think. We should come up with a new award. You know, we had the Jim Moffitt Award for whining. We should come up with the.
With the sheriff's award?
Yeah, people shift from the 32 budget to the CNU, the Calaveras, the narcotics budget. So there's transfers based on where funding's available.
I don't, are we saying from general fund to a grant?
Sometimes that's, yes, sometimes that's true.
So.
They looked at their budget, determined where their funding availability was, and made assignments based on that funding availability.
So we have two deputy sheriff twos, interdepartmental transfers. They went from a general fund to CNU, or is that what it's saying? And from general fund to OES? Is that what I'm reading?
Can you move deputies into where we have grant monies?
Okay. That wasn't clear to me. And in public works, I'm assuming that's what.
They moved people from administration to the road department. Several of them. I can just look it up. Sorry, I don't have that in my hands.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but that's essentially.
All right. I'd like to, we're not discussing things per se like we will start tomorrow, but if there are any clarifications or questions or comments of the departments or the public might like to make at this time, we welcome that.
Maybe I can leave these on so I can see better. I'm Al Segalo, the Calaveras County Taxpayer Association. I want to thank you for the opportunity to comment on the budget. And I wish I had more brains so I could figure out what this is all about. It's confusing to me. And I've read the budget recommendations that were posted on the internet, and I'm amazed at the amount of intelligence that went into this item. It's incredible. I couldn't understand, when you have one human being can understand so much and be able to express it so well. One of the things that occurs to me at speaking as a taxpayer is the question, maybe thinking out of the box a little bit, what do we really expect from government? In a budget put together under the direction of board supervisors, that question cannot come up, because it's really policy. And the departments and the CIO needs the. And the departments and the CIO needs to follow the policy that's set down by the board supervisors. So the area of philosophy is not really in Jeanne's realm. She has to be concerned with just the numbers. So this question is really a matter of philosophy and direction as to asking different questions that would otherwise not be asked. And of course, the question is, the big one, what should the taxpayers expect from government? Well, the parallel question to that would be, what is government? What is it, is it like Safeway or Walmart or a private hospital? What is, what makes government unique and different from all the other organized human activity that we depend on for our lives? Using force to take from some to give to others is classic Marxism, from each according to their ability and to each according to their need. However, it's not charity, kindness, or philanthropy. It's not that. It's actually plunder, even if it goes for a good purpose. Even if I, if I wanted to help somebody, I could take Tom's money and give it to that person and then claim how good I am.
Well, if you find my money, Al, let me know where it is.
But would I really be good? I mean, would I really be doing a good thing? Would I be humane and kind if I, if I used my gun and took Tom's money and gave it to somebody else? I think that's just probably no. It's really not right. It's kind of like morality sees further than intellect. We're dealing with intellect now, but there is a moral part to all this. There's some things that happen in Tuamee County that maybe could be examples. They went through, all the counties are going through this similar process, and some are doing better than others. We ought to look at the ones that are doing better and ask why. I think there was an article in the Modesto B about the valley counties and how the budgets are affecting them, and they found that one of them was doing okay. They just had to have more commercial development and more commercial income so that they didn't have a big budget squeeze.
What county was that?
That's Modesto. No, River...
A city or a county?
It's a city, and it was Riverbank.
Well, cities are entirely different.
Yeah, but it's the same, the same things happen in the cities or happen in the counties, actually happen in states. And the thing is that they, I think, is that they may have had a better mix on their tax base that many of the other cities have. In Tuamee County, we're blessed. We talk about pain and anguish, and, but we don't talk about some of the blessings we have. One of the blessings we have, we don't, we're not trying to run a county hospital, believe it or not. There's no tax money, or very little, that's going to a county hospital. Somewhere back, some previous supervisors were really wise and didn't get us into the hospital business.
That's true.
And if it were one of you, my hat's off to you. In Tuamee County, they tried to run a county hospital. They tried to run a private business.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, right? You hit the nail on the head. They finally woke up and says, we need to privatize. We don't need to run a county hospital. And they did. And through a brilliant CIO, he put it together, and he put it together in a non-confrontational way and kind of neutralized the normal negative reaction you get if you make major changes when there's, when there's lobby groups nipping at you. So, and there's some other things they did too. They found that they could privatize services for the jails, I think cafeteria service, I think it was, save a whole bunch of money. And there's some other things they've done too, and I forgot, because I'm old, I can't remember everything. But if we could break out of the box a little bit in the policy area and in the area of philosophy, and look at this budget and ask the question, are there things, are there things that could be better done by the private sector? And if the answer is yes, then go about and do it. Just do it, and then, and see if we can be one of the best-run counties in the state. Thank you. Oh, by the way, speaking of philosophy, there's two works. The taxpayers are very wealthy now. The Taxpayer Association, we've had a luncheon, and we've got money, and so we can afford to give you books. And there are two books we'd like to give you. First one is The Constitution of the United States. It's very good, and it's just as valid now as it was when it was written. And the other one is a classic, one supervisor here, I think, has read it, maybe two, The Law by Frederick Bastiat. This is a classic. It talks about the basic thing we were talking about, what to expect from government, and it's timeless. And you don't have a clerk right now, so I'll hand these out, and I appreciate the chance to make these remarks.
No, no, not sorry.
It's all right, you can have mine. I already have one.
I knew there was one.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
If there are anyone else that would like to make any comments at this time? Okay. We're going to meet tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. And is there an agenda that will be...
There is an agenda. Departments, if they so choose, will make a presentation to the board about issues of concern. We will start at nine o'clock in the Sequoia Room at CalWorks and work our way through the agenda.
On behalf of the board, I really want county staff to know we appreciate what's been done on giving this to us and the pain and anguish that you and your staff and the citizens of Calaveras are having, are going to be going through in this process. If it is a team effort, we recognize that. And I wish there was something better we could do to wave a magic wand, but we can't. So we will all get through this together. Thank you, and we'll see you tomorrow morning at nine o'clock.
And I want you all to go out there and vote for Tom Tryon. Thank you.